Test 1-2, 1-2. Good eve-- good afternoon. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting. I will ask for a row-- oh, please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which I stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, roll call please.
Roll call the members of the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Here, Mr. Lopes. Is absent?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Here, Mr. Pelton.
Here.
Here, and Chairman Tucker.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. First application on tonight's agenda, A 2320. This was continued from the meeting of June 28th. Rosa Greco, 48 Jones Road, requesting a special permit from the zoning board of appeals in accordance with Revere Revised Ordinances, Section 1740040, to enable the appellant to modify and extend a nonconforming two-family structure by constructing a one-story addition to the rear of the existing structure at 48 Jones Road.
Okay, before you start to speak. Good afternoon. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. It's Rosa Greco.
And your address for it.
Oh, I'm sorry. 48 Jones Road, Revere.
Okay. This is a continuance from our last meeting, so I will open this up to any proponents. Anyone in favor? Would the ward counselor like to speak?
Joanne McKenna, Ward 1 Counselor. So, the last time I was here, I really didn't know anything about what was going on. So I did meet with Mrs. Greco and her family. I went down to the property. I did meet with the abutters, who was-- he was against it at first. I explained to him what was going to happen, that they were going to do 20 feet from their door, 10 feet from their foundation, where the foundation add-- it wasn't going to be encroaching on his property. They wanted a yard. I thought it was a good deal. And both the abutters and Mrs. Greco, we both agreed that it's-- it should go. So that's-- that's what I have. Thank you.
Seeing that it's a public hearing, are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing, not all closed that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Opposed? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing, not all closed that side of the hearing. This is a continuation. Is there any members that wish to speak on it? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to approve with the standard conditions for the board of appeals and site plan review.
The conditions are as follows. One, if the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within two years of the date of the grant of-- I'm sorry, the special permit, the right shall lapse. Three, this variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and plan the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the city of Revere. Four, the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the special permit as requested, subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes is absent. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. I want to thank everyone of you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next application is A 2322. Gonzaga Elamoo, 61 Gage Ave., Revere, Mass., requesting a variance of Revere Revised Ordinances, 1724010, minimum rear yard setback to enable the appellant to construct an addition for the purpose of converting the existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling on Lot 29 at 55 Union Street.
Please press the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I purchased the house--
Yes, state your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My address is-- property address, 55 Union Street. My name is Giselle Alamo.
Okay.
Just, I asked the building department, last time I was in hearing. They allowed me to work with the setback. You have to be 35-- 30. But I request 420. And I spoke to the neighbors. They have no problem. And that's why, you know, I have to apply here. If I do that, it's two land. I'm going to combine the land in one. So because I'm paying two tax-- property tax for the land, I have a proof here. Paral 1 Zone and Paral 2. So the land is just sitting there, so that's why I tried to extend it and build. And I submitted all the plan, everything. The building department, they approved. So unless it's going to be very small living room and a kitchen, so I tried to little bit access for the living area for my family. Because she have wheelchair access. She's-- one of my daughters, she's wheelchair access. She underage. So that's why I asked the city, the building department, but they have to pass by the board. Because you have two land, so you can combine together. That's what happened.
Okay. Seeing that this is a public hearing, I will ask if there's any proponents? Anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing, not all closed that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing, not all closed that side of the hearing. The ward counselor did reach out to me and say that he has no issues with this as long as there was no neighborhood opposition, for the record. I do have a question concerning the parking. So how many parking spaces total on the property?
Four. It is the plan, if it is the plan, the engineering.
I see the plan with the two on the left.
Yeah, one-- two on the left, two on the right.
Then 18 by 24 has two spaces?
Yeah.
Okay. All righty. That was the question that I had. Any members wish to speak?
Motion to approve.
I would ask for a motion to approve with the conditions.
The conditions set forth by the zoning board of appeals are as follows. One, if the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. Three, this variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and planned the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and the building inspector of the city of Revere. Three, the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested, subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes is absent. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next application is a special permit, A 2323. Gregory Olson and Jane Black, 175 Rice Ave., requesting a special permit from the ZBA in accordance with Section 1740040, the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere, to enable the appellant to alter and extend the pre-existing nonconforming single-family structure at 175 Rice Ave.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Nancy O'Neil, and I am an attorney located at 14 Proctor Avenue. I am here tonight on behalf of the applicants, Mr. Gregory Olson. In summary, this proposal is for the enclosure of an existing breezeway on the 175 Rice Avenue property to involve a two-story addition. We have spoken to our neighbors who are here in attendance tonight. They have requested that we continue the matter to August to allow them a chance to review the plans. We would like to request a continuance to the August meeting.
Seeing that it's a public hearing, I will have to open it up to proponents. Seeing and hearing, not all closed that side of the hearing. Opponents?
Ronald Clark, 98, with Nav, Revere, Mass.
Okay, what number?
98.
Okay.
We're hoping you'd just grant the continuance. We just want to review the plans.
Okay. Just still, it's a formality. I have to open it up, okay? Anyone else? Seeing and hearing, not all closed that side of the hearing. There's a motion to continue on the floor. I'd ask for a row call, please. Okay, the next meeting will-- let me just see what that is. August 30th. I have no issue with August 30th. Anyone else? So our next meeting would be on August 30th. A motion to continue to August 30th at 5:00 p.m. I'd ask for a row call, please.
Shall the zoning board of appeals continue this matter to August 30th? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes is absent. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the continuance has been granted. Next application and last application is A 2324. Anir Amaya, 61 Glendale Street, requesting a variance of Revere Revised Ordinances, Section 1724010, maximum stories within the RB district to enable the appellant to construct a third-story addition to the existing two-family dwelling at 61 Glendale.
Good afternoon. Andrea Garcia, 61 Glendale Street.
You're here to represent the owner?
Yes, we're the contractors and the applicant, so yep.
Okay.
Maybe it's-- yeah, so we're proposing a dormer on the left side of the property. The right side was already approved. So this will create more living space and try to get a little bit more of a square ceiling up in the third floor.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so I'll wait to ask my questions. But you just blew my mind when you said that you're adding just to one side. You added a total floor from what I was over there looking at. So the height of the building is much higher than what it was originally.
What it was originally, yes.
Okay, so nothing was approved?
Yes, there's a permit in the system already for the right side of the dormer. The issue is the setback towards the left side. There is pretty much just a couple feet on the left of the property, if you see the plot plan. So on the right side, we have-- we meet all the setbacks and everything. So that got approved already.
Okay, I'll continue with the public hearing and then we'll ask questions. So seeing that this is a public hearing, are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing, not all closed that side of the hearing. Opponents? There are several people in the audience. I do limit your dissertation up on the microphone to two minutes, so if you would like to present anything, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Straub, and I am a resident and have been for 10 years at 69 Glendale Street. I also own 75 Glendale Street. I am the abutter to 61 Glendale Street. And first of all, this property has been an eyesore ever since I purchased my property and probably previous to that. The variance that they are requesting is based off of drawings that include alterations to the original structure that included the addition of an area in front of the building, which was originally a one-story enclosed porch. The front of the house was reframed to include the porch area in the living space and extend it vertically to the second floor. This was done without permit. This was done approximately February 2023, and it was not included in the permit granted of February 22nd, 2023. Subsequent construction assumed this modification, which now has three stories on an original one-enclosed porch, which was one-story. Second, I received in the mail the letter for tonight's hearing, but was unable to obtain a copy of the plan until the following Monday. However, the third floor was already constructed on the 14th and 15th of July. They had almost completed it until a cease and desist order was put on it on Monday, the 17th. However, they continued to do work on it. They have now since removed the cease and desist order, and there have been trucks in front of the house. I also would like to note that the application for the variance is quite suspect since the address is not-- it says this is a lot-- it has an existing two-family home and is located on the corner of Crest Ave. and Sales Street. There is no Crest Ave. and Sales Street off of Glendale Street. And finally--
Anyone else in opposition? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Oh. There you go. John Memelow, 67 Woodleyan Road, which I live on the opposite side of this massive building that they constructed. I believe it was a second family to begin with, a two-family. But then they added this illegal third floor, this massive third floor with a dormer. I believe Mr. Powers also objects to this construction. That's all I have to say. I can't add anything more than what this woman--
Just your-- the letter that you sent, you're saying it's a three-family. It's not. So it's a two-family they're asking for.
That they're constructing into a three.
No, they're not constructing it into a three.
It's already--
It's a two-family unit, though we-- they're not asking for a three-family.
It's a legal two. It's a legal two.
It's a legal one that they're asking for a two? No, it's a legal two. They're asking to extend the height of it. But it's not a three-family. They would not get approved for a three-family. If they did something like that, it would be illegal.
It will be the largest building in the area.
Yes, that's true, but that-- just for the clarification, they're not requesting a three-family.
Okay.
Okay. Let me can-- go ahead. Do you want to press the microphone? Sorry. You said you're at 67 Woodland?
Correct.
You're on the other side. There's a train track between--
I could actually see that third floor--
You mean through the--
From my house.
Through the trees over there.
Through the trees. Previously, there was a clear view until that third floor was constructed.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I want to know. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Rosemary Torenzi, 72 Glendale Street. These people that have been building, have been building with no permits. They started with no permits. They own a property, rate a butt against my property on 72 Glendale Street, which is 68 Glendale. They put in all kinds of plumbing without permits and everything in there. They have afterparties. They're not very good people, to my knowledge, since they've bought the property. They had-- did nothing to the neighborhood, nothing good for the neighborhood. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Anthony Pazziali, 51 Arcadia Street. It's in the Oak Island neighborhood. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before I get going on a couple of things, a little clarification. I have a video that I think might be pertinent, but am I allowed to show it? Because I think it needs to be submitted seven days.
Right, and we already have pitches for the timeframe. So the video would show that, but we already have that information of the timeframe.
Okay, the only reason I brought that up is it is clear that they are building-- if they are building dormers, they are on both sides, so it's not just one side. Another thing that I'd like to bring up is I'm pretty sure that the variance is requesting a third floor, not a dormer. I don't even know if you need a variance for a dormer. It's probably within their right to build one. But it's clear that they're asking for a third floor. So if you were to pass this, you would be passing a third floor, not a dormer. Second thing, I don't see there being any hardship to have a variance to add a third floor. We're talking about a developer. We're not talking about my family. You know, I have a mother-in-law, and let's say I needed to go up a level because I was going to put my mother-in-law on the first level, and I was going to move upstairs. So I don't see where there is a hardship. The property absolutely needs to be redone. It will look great when it is done. If we start giving variances to add third floors to developers, it will set a precedent. They will all have a right to a hardship, which they-- I mean, making more money to have more rent isn't a hardship. So I would like you guys to look at it like that. The reason they want to add the third floor is because they want more rooms so they can charge higher rents. I don't see that being a hardship at all. So please, when you look at this, guys, consider that it's not a hardship. Also, I'd like to point out something that the lady that lives on Glendale said. The cease and desist wasn't taken down by the city. It was put up by the city, and the builder removed it and has not put it back up since. So the type of people we're dealing with, and I'd hope that we don't want to deal with people like this in our city, that if you can't-- all right, sorry.
No hardship. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? If no one else wished to speak, okay. The ward counselor did voice his concern in opposition to this. Any members wish to ask questions? I do have a few questions, but--
Yeah, right. They're asking for a third floor, and I believe the zoning's for two and a half floors. Is that how I understand it, that area?
Yes.
Oh, no, I just came back up to--
Okay. I'm concerned-- I live in Oak Island, so I frequent that area quite often. In fact, before you-- when you did the original enclosure in the bottom, I was concerned about that as a property owner being in the area, not as the chairman of the board of appeals.
I just want to clarify. I'm sorry. That enclosure that I'm hearing about, that was not us. We just came onto this project for what I'm proposing now, which is the left-side dormer. The right side, that was approved already in a building permit, I did not--
I'm questioning your approval, because if you recall, you're here for adding a third story of the building, the height. That's in the-- that was what the request is on the documents here. Not left or right, it's to add height to the property. Now--
It's a left-side dormer.
It-- who filled out the application?
I had some help with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's for height. It's not just for one side, it's for height. Secondly, on-- I was over there on the 15th before you started to enclose the front. I contacted the building inspector myself, asked him to go down there, review this, and he put a cease and desist. And then you continue to add the-- what you're saying, the dormers, when you have a cease and desist on it. What made you do that?
The other difficult thing here is that the homeowner, he has hired us to pull this permit for him, and then he's hired other contractors to actually do the build-out.
When I asked it, the first thing at the start of this meeting, I asked if you were here as the homeowner. The homeowner's an LLC, so are you here representing the LLC? Are you part of that entity?
No, I am not.
Okay. So where is the applicant for-- to represent himself for the LLC?
The homeowner, he apologizes on his behalf. He had an issue with his children, that one of them got sick at summer camp. And he, you know, he doesn't feel well at all and doesn't want to risk anybody getting sick.
Okay. So are you aware that there's a cease and desist at that property now?
Yes.
And as a construction-- you're there as a person with doing the construction?
No.
Okay.
I'm just the one who's pulled the permit, contractor who pulled the permit.
So you're the-- you have the construction super who pulled the permit?
Yes.
So it's your construction super license that has a cease and desist on it that you continue to work on? Am I not-- am I not correct, or am I following this?
Yes. Basically, what I'm trying to say is the permit is pulled under Valentin's General Contracting CSL, which is the application that I have in the system now. There is another permit in the system for the right-side dormer. I don't have the permit number with me, but there's one in the system that got approved due to the setback. We meet all the-- they met all the setbacks when they--
But it wasn't the height.
But it wasn't--
So that dormer, you raised that dormer as well in height.
And that wasn't-- that wasn't my application. I didn't pull that. The homeowner has hired someone else. It's not--
Right, but that was another height thing. So the building department had the right to approve to a certain height.
Okay.
Is-- they have a matter of right to do that. You are now coming to add to a different height. It's not left or right dormer. It's height, period. Because there's no dormer on that side. You're raising it to-- and adding another dormer. You're not making it so where that was approved down here--
It will.
No, I'm looking at the property.
I know. Right now, it's even, yes. Right now, it's even. But that left side is what I'm trying to explain, and I'm sorry.
It wasn't approved for the height that you are at right now.
That I am now.
Okay, so don't be saying anything about the left side being approved because it wasn't approved for this height that you're asking for. Left or right, you're asking to raise the building higher.
I'm asking to keep it the same as--
Ma'am, the building was raised higher.
Yes, it was raised, yes.
It's not to keep it anywhere. It's raised higher, point-blank, built, raised higher. Because I've been over there many, many times.
But it's not going any higher than what it is now, is what I'm saying. They started building-- the contractor that the homeowner-- I'm pulling the permit. The homeowner has hired another contractor to, like, actually do the build, to actually build it. The guy started the right side, thinking that the left side could also be done, but that's why I'm here now. The left side was not supposed to be-- sorry, done. It wasn't supposed to be framed yet.
The right side couldn't be the height that it is now. That's not what was approved. You went higher. You went higher. You went a third story. You went to the third story.
Well, whoever pulled that permit did. I didn't-- yeah, but--
All right, so it's not left or right.
Okay.
You're asking for a height that's-- and then doing it with-- on a cease and desist. That's my knowledge.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I don't see-- my personal observation on this is I don't see how it would have been a hardship for any homeowner to do this by increasing the height for this and then doing it on top of a cease and desist being issued. No, they're representing the homeowner. It's all one of the same.
I don't understand how you're saying that the application for one side, because I'm looking at the application review, and it says to create dormers on both sides of the house. So I don't know what we're talking about, the left side, the right side.
Yeah.
And I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to deny it, and that would be based on not having the hard-- there's no hardship-- No. For-- to grant this. I see what you--
Sure, the question always has to be in the affirmative. So a yes vote would grant the variance, a no vote will deny the variance. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested? Mr. Lemina? No, Mr. Lopes is absent. Mr. O'Brien?
No.
No, Mr. Pelton? I'm sorry, Mr. Pelton? No. And Chairman Tucker?
No.
No, the variance has been denied. There's no further business, Chairman.
Having no further business, our next meeting will be August 30th at 5:00 p.m.